I'd like to call the meeting for April 20th to record an education meeting to order at 6:06. Everybody please stand in for the pledge.
President, Justice, Justice Black, United States of America, do you read all the published statements on the nation's behalf? You will be the first to give your answer.
Jonathan Fergur.
Here.
Michelle Kaiser is not really present tonight, do you prefer?
Here.
Mike Wenzler.
Here.
And please keep running with your theme, Mahoney.
Here.
There you go.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the exits are to your right and to your left and behind us to our right. Subject 2.1, I'd like a motion that after we review the Board of Education approves the agenda as presented and ordered at this meeting. Dave, Aaron, all in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Subject 3.1. I'd like to have seven minutes for the March 13th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Motion. Dave? Like? Any discussion? All in favor? Subject 4.1, Statements and Presentations to the Board. Sarah?
Thank you. First up this evening, we have a budget presentation by Assistant Superintendent Amara. Thank you. So we, the Board of Education, the Superintendent, the Administration, Central, and Business Office staff have been working on this budget almost since the beginning of the year. The formal process started in December with the development of the vision and goals for the 23-24 school year, which was adopted later that month in December. We've had committee meetings, workshop meetings, and board presentations since then, culminating in the preparation for tonight's final budget presentation. There are still things that we're waiting to work out. We'll continue to monitor students that need ELL services to determine if a .5 teaching English to speakers of other languages and a .5 elementary school education teacher is needed and what that configuration may look like. We also have the administrators and the custodial unit contract negotiations outstanding. We're currently negotiating an installment purchase agreement for network printers. We do not have the results from the OUBOSI's Cooperative Service Transportation Requests. Rockland and Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's COSER prices are still outstanding. And we're potentially hiring a food service advisory consultant to help us prepare for a departmental administrative review for next year. Reference to expenses. Because of the numerous grants, fortunately, because of the numerous grants, we may fall under single audit next year, which is an additional $12,000. We've experienced an increase in security services because of more sports and clubs and also contractual increases, which have added to an increase for next year's budget. We've had an increase in gas and electric. We currently participate in a consortium with Putnam Northern Westchester and other schools, and this is their projection for next year. We have that BOSI's Capital Project expenditure that Orange County residents voted to approve this year. We have the prepay with a teacher, one teacher and one teaching assistant that the superintendent's been talking about. One teacher and two teaching assistants. We have added a part-time lunch recess aid here at the middle school. We are participating in the E-Rate Consortium for a wireless controller and access points. We've increased the funding to the drama club for materials and supplies in both the elementary school and the middle school. We're adding the peer leadership club and the environmental club. Last year, we purchased one bus. This year, it'll be two, 66-passenger buses. Cooperative transportation services has gone up, and this year, we had to piggyback a lot with Warwick and Washington because they didn't have the services for us. And then the debt service for the elementary school cafeteria renovation. Now, when we look at that and how it impacts the budget for general support, which consists of the increase of the BOSI's Capital Project and the increase of gas and electric, that comes to, that's primarily the big chunk at $176,000, but that's reflected in a 6.35 increase to general support. The other increase under public, pupil transportation, that's the increase in the budget for the additional bus and for the cooperative transportation. And then in undistributed, the other increase is for social security, disability, workman's comp, retirement contributions, health insurance, and the like. The big increase there is for the debt service for the elementary school cafeteria. With reference to revenues, state aid is still outstanding. We continue to spend down our variances. This year, we'll be using, in addition to the ERS reserve, we'll be using the capital reserve to fund one of the buses and the debt reserve to finance the elementary school cafeteria renovation. We're very fortunate because we have had increases to our interest earnings, and we'll be using our fund balance to make up for any difference. So we've held at a 3% increase, which would reflect the governor's recommended allocation of state aid for this year. And we've also increased interest earnings. Last year, we had interest earnings about 0%, and this year, it's up to 4%. And then again, we're using the ERS reserve, the capital reserve for bus purchases and the debt reserve. And finally, the tax increase, the Board has authorized a 1.9% tax increase. And that increase could have gone up to 3.78 or $649,000, but we were able to, using the reserves, hold that down to 1.9%. So with the tax increase of 1.9%, sorry, it'll cost the taxpayers about $7.75 a month. The public hearing on the budget will be held at May 9th, and then the budget election, the Board election and budget vote will be held at the elementary school on May 16th, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Are there any questions?
I'd like to thank Assistant Superintendent Amaro and her team, as well as the Board of Education. This takes a lot of hours and a lot of marks, over six to seven months, so thank you very much for your dedication and thank you to the Board for your time and attention to this and keeping the limit again under that 2%. Even that 2% tax cap is not a real number, as we saw that it could go to 3.78. The Board's worked really hard to keep that tax impact to a minimum for our taxpayers so that 1.9 still stays under 2%. So thank you to the Board and to the Business Office for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
So on tonight's agenda, we do have a calendar adjustment. We did not use all of our snow days, so I'm recommending you give back two days, one on the Friday of Memorial Day weekend and the second one being Friday, the, what was going to be the last day of school. So on the 23rd of June and the 26th of May, the district will be closed for a give-back snow day, so that's not tonight's agenda. Also, just wanted to make sure everybody knew and knows, and I understand that it has been shared on the Little Greenwood Lake page and we've shared it on our Facebook page as well, that the Greenwood Lake Community Garage Sale that is hosted by the Laker Kids, it's going to be this Saturday, it is the same day as opening day for the Little League, so we're hoping there's a lot of foot traffic in the area, so we invite everybody to come by and see what treasures you might find. Spencer reports. Mrs. Connelly?
Esther? Good evening. This month at the elementary school is all about reading. And Auerfeld, our One Book One School Committee, kicked off a whole-school reading of the book Fenway and Hattie by Gloria J. Coe. Each weeknight, students and their families are reading a specific section of the book, and then during school day, teachers are using the text to make connections to grade-level learning in many creative ways. There are daily trivia questions, choice board activities, and a school-wide search for our new friend Fenway. Students are rising to the occasion and have brought in lots of writing responses, dioramas, and pictures of themselves reading to their own pets or their self-dos. This event runs through May 5th and will conclude with a Dress Like Fenway Day and a whole-school canine assembly on May 1st. And I'd like to thank Edna and her committee for all the extra effort they put into creating resources and making this such an exciting event for our students and their families. We will continue with the fun of reading as we celebrate April being National Poetry Month. Next week, students are invited to keep a favorite or self-written poem in their pocket and share with their friends or any staff member to earn their books, and this event helps strengthen the developing skills of reading, expression, and fluency. And speaking of developing skills, next week, we will be conducting our DAF4 screenings with next year's registered kindergartners and hosting an orientation, building tour, and the ever-popular bus ride for our newest incoming class of kindergarten students. I'd also like to highlight just a few community connections that we have for this month. First, I'd like to thank PE teacher Eric Fausti, who hosted our annual Healthy Heart event, previously known as Jump Rope for Heart, to raise awareness for the importance of physical activity and heart healthiness, and 28 students rose to the challenge to participate, and four of those even took the extra time to learn hands-on CPR through an American Heart Association online course. We raised over $6,000, total is over $6,162.71, which is amazing for the American Heart Association, and everyone who participated will be receiving prizes and certificates from the AHA for their efforts, and I do intend to put a little publishing in that news paper, because that's a pretty cool thing. Next, we've continued to connect learning to our curriculum with the help of local community groups. Kindergarten and third-grade buddies traveled to the community garden on Poplar Street to plant this year's crop of green bean plants, and each student came home with their own plant to grow and care for. Second-grade students learned all about water cycle and water conservation with educators from the Orange County Water Authority. And first and third graders relived history through hands-on presentations by the Traveling Trunks volunteers from the Local Historical Society. And lastly, next Friday, April 28th, is Arbor Day, and we will celebrate the life and dedication of long-term Board of Education founder John Finn with our annual 10 AM ceremony, where all kindergarten children will be given a tree to plant and watch grow through their years as a Greenwood Lake student in remembrance of Mr. Finn, and I invite all of you to join us for this tribute to his life and years of service to our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Connelly. Mr. Kmart has an update from the middle school. I'm seeing the Appalachian Trail.
Very good. Good evening. Do a quick look back here, just updating the Board that our spring sports have begun. The fields look fantastic, and our baseball, softball, and track teams are already set and competing. We had our NJHS induction. What a great evening, a student-run event. The current members run and facilitate the induction of our newest members, and just a great way to highlight all of the hard work that those students are doing. Also, Willie Wonka Jr., we want to thank Mr. Pignatero, Mr. Compton, Mr. Vennelli, and all of our students, our actors and our stage crew, our set design on another fantastic stage production here at the middle school. And yes, our Youth Empowerment and Sustainability Summit took place, and those students will be here this evening following this presentation to talk to the Board about their experience and future initiatives. Also, since we were able to see you last, Mrs. Auerfeld, we want to thank for all of her work in the March Madness, March Madness Literacy Initiative. When we looked at the One School, One Book Initiative, we wanted to seek ways to really promote literacy for all of our students and find ways to empower students in the reading, and we were able to do that. It was great participation from all of our grade levels. We were able to celebrate the winners here yesterday, and it was just a great time here at the middle school promoting one of our greatest initiatives in literacy with our students. Also, today, we wrapped up our ELA testing, and I want to thank all of our staff and students for an outstanding testing cycle here. It went off without hitch across the last two days. Of course, we will still be testing those students that need to make up exams, and our state math testing will happen on May 2nd and 3rd with science following that at the end of the month with med. Also, a reminder to families that our third quarter, our third market period is now closed, and report cards will come home next week. And a reminder for all of our students and families that academic eligibility for the fourth quarter is dependent upon those third-quarter grades, and a reminder to families and students for an adjustment in that policy that heading into next year, our fourth-quarter grades determine eligibility as we head into the fall. So we want students to finish the year strong, focus on their academics, and have a great close to the year. I also want to highlight our Students of the Month for March, Sean Merrick Grace, Tessa Riley, and Leila for demonstrating responsibility throughout the month. And just to highlight two key things coming up in May, I mentioned the math state assessments are May 2nd and 3rd, and of course, our eighth-grade Washington DC trip, our eighth graders attending will head off on May 10th to DC, a fantastic trip. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm just going to introduce really quick, I mentioned the Youth Empowerment and Sustainability Summit. Back in February, I want to start with thanking the Board of Education and Superintendent Haddon for supporting that initiative and sending these five students and Mrs. Gosher off to the Ashokin. The Ashokin had presented this opportunity to us through the trip that we take annually there, and presenting it to Mrs. Gosher, she jumped at the opportunity, I don't know if she'll share this, but in her prior work in New York City, she led similar work and was really eager to take this challenge on. And these five students, I do want to highlight that they went on Super Bowl Sunday and came home on Valentine's Day in the middle of winter at the Ashokin. A tough time to be there, but they dedicated that time to learning about this great initiative, learning about three key areas that they're going to discuss tonight, and the whole purpose of the event is to bring students together, I think there's 25 districts from New York City all the way up to the Finger Lakes region, where they brought kids together to teach them about those different areas with the intent of bringing that work back to your school. A key focus of the presentations were Agents of Change, and these students learned a great deal about that and are going to help spearhead our environmental club and bring some changes here to the middle school. So with that, I'm going to introduce Mrs. Gosher, who's going to kick off their presentation.
Yeah. All right, so tonight, I will be talking about our experience at the ES Summit, the Youth and Empowerment and Sustainability Summit. With me, I have Mackenzie Haddon, Evan Hernandez, Kylie Kennedy, Lily Josselin, and Karen, who also came with there. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you all, thank the Board for the opportunity to be here tonight to tell you about this great experience. I would like to thank Ms. Haddon, Mr. Kmart for all their support in planning, attending the summit. Ashokin for hosting us, it was a great three days, full of learning and great experiences, and my students were really jumping into this opportunity and these challenges that we will be facing. So a little bit about what ES is, this was an opportunity for young leaders to experience relative conversations facilitated by youth, so students similar to them, and adult experts in the field of climate, climate change, and sustainability. We also all became inspired by climate scientists and innovators. We were able to attend a couple discussions and presentations by people who were leading a lot of projects in the field. We practiced, built leadership, partnership, and presentation skills. Part of this summit was to present a project that we were going to bring back to the community, and we also learned self-care, resilience, perseverance. We talked about feelings of hopelessness, disconnection, and more importantly, we were able to connect and collaborate with like-minded peers. When this opportunity became available, we made a call at Greenwood Lake for innovators, agents of change, problem solvers, and leaders at Greenwood Lake. We were tasked with choosing, selecting four students to attend the summit, which turned to be a very difficult task. We have a lot of people in our community that feel all these characteristics. At the first initial meeting, we had about 50 students that were interested in attending this Ashokin trip, so we then went through a process to identify a team of students that would like to take on the challenge of attending the summit and then bringing back some initiatives. On the screen, there are a couple quotes of their writing responses that they submitted to us explaining how they see themselves or how they will see themselves as innovators, agents of change, problem solvers, or leaders at the Greenwood Lake community. After this, yeah, after this selection process, we tasked them with coming back to our community with a support network and a toolkit to help implement action plans so that we can move forward locally and that we can connect with other communities globally. Now, you may be wondering what the summit was like. It was very intense. We had, we were there for three days, we had a lot of learning to do. The summit this year had three themes. They wanted to focus on food, agriculture, soil composting, fashion, particularly focusing on fast fashion and energy. Prior to attending the summit, each of the students selected workshops that they were interested in attending and learning more about. On the screen, there is the schedule for day one, two, and three. It was scheduled so that the students had breakout sessions. We had opportunities to do whole group presentations, and more importantly, they actually built up periods throughout the day where we debrief, where we could internalize, discuss, digest, and think about all the great things that we were learning. That's day three. And then on day three, we had an opportunity to come together as the Greenwood Lake community and come up with a plan that we would like to bring back to the community. There's some pictures of some of the activities that we engaged in. We were able to do some amazing hiking. There's a picture, there was an art blog, so it was a lot of learning, but we also had a lot of fun. And then on the last day, it was presented to us, an opportunity to actually do a radio interview for a Spanish-speaking radio program for Kingston, the radio in Kingston. And then the last picture on the screen is this great group of students presenting their action plans. So right now, I'm going to pass the microphone to my students. They are going to talk to each of you about two of the workshops that they attended and what they learned from these workshops.
Hello? So Plastics 101 was about the effects of plastics and how much there is in the world and like, um... So, and then Megan Wolf, who was the instructor of the class, basically, told us about microplastics, which are tiny particles of plastics that are inside of our bodies currently, which isn't the best. And then she told us about like how we can change that by buying reusable containers and trying to limit how much plastic we use and buy, and then also, basically, just overall, just educating us about the plastics in our world. In implementing a school-wide composting program, we learned about how many different people have already started doing this in their schools. Amelia Legar introduced us to how we could create and carry out a plan to create a composting program in our school, and this is actually one of the things we're going to be talking about later, but she told us about how many people, even in our homes, are doing it and taking leftover food and putting it in a maybe homemade, maybe store-bought composting bin and using it for their own personal gardens or using it to take it to other gardens around their communities, and then... And then also how much waste we are creating unconsciously and how much we don't realize that even just small bits of trash and leftover food that we throw away builds up over time and creates a huge dent in everything and just all, all people mostly do it, and how all of that together is creating a huge impact on our world. Bringing the next check plastic film recycling challenge to your school was mainly about how you would get these garbage, not bags, bins located in our school, and students would bring in bags of plastic film to school in order to reduce the amount of plastic waste thrown out. So basically, the school that built up the most plastic
So basically, the school that built up the most plastic film would win a cash prize or outdoor dry cleaning products, like the bins you see on the screen. And those are also what the bins look like. Um... Next one? This one was actually really interesting because getting clothes out of the ground and moving around was mainly about how much water goes into a single outfit and how much clothes you actually go to stores and how much of them are actually thrown away. That picture in the top corner is a landfill full of clothes. And the other picture is how much water goes into one outfit of a cotton t-shirt and jeans, about 20,000 liters of water. In the bottom picture, this one was really fun. We did a, this is also mainly about you having thrifts at your school and using them in order to reduce the amount of clothes that end up in landfills. So we did a fashion show of thrift. You can't really see me, but I'm in front of the projector. That's great. So, yeah, that was fun.
Um, and then we took, just drew, kind of learned how to like make sidewalks and project the plan to people and how they did it in Ryan Becker, how they made sidewalks safe and fun for kids walking to school and walking around with their friends. And they made this little program about it, and it took months to like finish the plan and get it over with. And the photo is kind of where it started. Creating a circular wardrobe with upcycling, it's kind of like what Evan said, except instead of like wearing it, they taught us how to use the clothes and make things out of it, like bags, dog toys.
So in the first time that I attended, it was about a plant-based diet at your school. I personally am vegetarian, so it was really interesting to see how much eating a non-plant-based diet can really like impact the atmosphere because it's the greenhouse gas emissions that come from methane, which is, I think they said 25 times more, sorry, 25 times more than carbon dioxide. So it is like genuinely extremely detrimental to the atmosphere, and it in turn impacts a lot of things connected to like global warming and climate change and all around. It's just really like, it's a lot better to have at least meatless Mondays. And it doesn't have to be in school, it can be in your own home. But in Kingston High School, they have a meatless Monday, and they've had it for a little while, and it's so far been really successful. And it's just using different types of protein and other types of food that don't involve animal byproducts. And even if it's just for one day, if a lot of people do it, it adds up and it's, it can be like very, very helpful to me. And the second one that I attended was one of the art blocks, and it was based off Jill Petrow's art, which is climate-inspired art that shows statistics. In the bottom one, it's about wildfires and the different effects of it. And I think it's really important to see the effects of it. Instead of, for some kids, it's easier to see the impacts of it when you can experience how bad it is and seeing pictures and participating in activities like this, it's really, it shows you how impactful it really is. In the activity, we each made a portion of the bigger climate mural. We had different art supplies that we could use, and we all made a portion of a chart that looked really similar to the one above in the top one. And we were using warmer colors and colder colors to show like the decrease of, I think it was, oh, sorry. It was red, it was, it was really, really similar to the one at the top, and it was a ton of people taking part of it. And it was, it was giant at the end, it was very, very, I think it was... Yeah, it was like about the size of a wall, and like everybody was making a portion of it, and it was like really helpful to see how terrible this was.
So I attended the electric computer has arrived, and it was about how schools and people at home can basically have more electric vehicles, gas pumps, or heat pumps, and like electric buses that can really help the environment for the schools. The art block that I did was cave art, and it was about how you can use materials from outside to make different things, like we crushed up acorns and mixed them with wax to make an ink, and we used branches to make charcoal. And at the end of it, we made a sign with a phrase on it. And the woman who was teaching us how to do this, she actually goes dumpster diving for art supplies at different, like, supply places because she thinks that they waste a lot of their art products and she reuses them for her school.
I'll just leave you with the thoughts of, you know, the incredible workshops that they got to attend and see, the other districts that they got to see where schools are startup programs, and then there are some that were legacy programs that were across multiple generations and, you know, they're touching, you know, 10, 12, 15 different areas. We really look forward in the areas of food here in the cafeteria, energy across the building, and the kids have a lot of ideas with our, you see this every time you come in here, our lost and found. I think this one was really something that, that a light bulb for our students. So we look forward to the initiatives that they come up with across food, fashion, and energy, and that they'll bring you back to the board for, to share the projects that they're gonna be looking to do.
So on the, on day three, after all this learning, we were tasked with coming up with an action plan for the school. That was one of the big outcomes of the AMs. So as a group, our students designed a project around the area of reducing waste. Our main goals include collaboration among peers in the school, identifying problems in the school where we can step in to reduce waste and implementing solutions. We also were tasked with identifying resources that we needed, and we identified that we need leaders. We need a big group of support to get this, this done. Now, before I explain a little bit of what we're gonna do and what areas we identified, I also wanted to share that this is a group that we attended the summit with. And in March, the end of March, they also did something very similar to these, where they presented to the board their action plan, and as a result of their advocacy, they were able to get a whole sustainability venture. This is really interesting because this group actually is called the Great Outdoors, and they did a lot of squirting outside, and now they're focusing a little bit more on sustainability after attending the summit. So just to show you how you can start collaborating with other groups. So for our next steps, we would like to find our own identity for Menue Club. We're still in the process of deciding what we wanna call ourselves. We still call ourselves the Ashoken People and Joke. We're starting to assess, collect data, identifying problems from Ashoken until we get back. We identify where waste happens the most. One of those places is the cafeteria, and the second place that we would like to tackle this, as Mr. Kimber mentioned, the lost and found. Let's see, once we identified those problems, so now we're really starting to think about how are we going to engage other students, the staff, and even the community, launching campaigns, initiatives to implement the solutions that we're starting to think about. We also find a lot of value in club integration, talking about NGHS, the peer leadership group, how can we work together to really get this, this campaign going and to scale up the efforts once we get this going. And then we love learning, so we're going to continue our education. Next week, we're going to be attending another planet summit at Vassar College, and it will be me and students again. Hopefully, we get to bring a little bit more ideas, a little bit more networking, so that we can continue this process. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for our students? Right. They do?
That was just a wonderful presentation. I'm not really sure how we're supposed to follow that as a board. Looks like you guys all, you know, learned a lot up there, and thank you for taking them all up there and attending.
And with the permission of the board, I know they have homework and stuff to study tonight, so we're gonna excuse them so they can take off and go do that. Thank you so much. Great job.
Good job. So Budget Committee? I think we're done. We're fine with that. Audio Committee? Policy Committee? I know there's a couple agendas on tonight. I mean, that we approve hopefully, that we've been discussing it, facilities in Warburg Valley High School.
So the SATs are scheduled on May 6th at Warburg Valley High School. Your child still has the opportunity to register. They would just have to pay the late fee at this point, but if they're looking to take the SATs, the next session at Warburg is May 6th, and you can find out information on the website and register still for that. Also, check your child's parent portal to take a look at their schedules for next year. Schedule, tentative schedules have been posted, and parents have time right now to look them over and make any adjustments, talk to your child. And if you have any problems or questions, reach out to their guidance counselor. They're asking if you do that by next week. And third marking period grades will be posted sometime next week as the marking period has ended. We should be receiving an email when the grades are posted online, and you can check the parent portal as well.
Chester? Oxla?
They, they did the BOC's presentation, the budget presentation virtually last week, April 12th. I'm sure it's posted online, if anyone wants to see the highlights. The person meeting is next week, maybe Thursday, two weeks from now. I'll be there, and I will report back to you.
And Ms. Ba, I know Michelle's not here. She usually reports on that, but obviously, everything that we're receiving from that about the budget and the statements, the budget. I don't see anybody here in the PTSA. Any updates about the village or like...
So Nancy Clifford was the liaison to the Village of Greenwood Lake. She did a wonderful job for us, coming to our meetings and sharing information when she couldn't come because of the overlap. She always sent a message. She did update me to let me know that there is going to be a new liaison to the Village of Greenwood Lake. I haven't been advised of that yet, but she would like to know by the best time.
We'll wait for it this Saturday, hoping that, hopefully, it's a great opportunity to go to see the Lakers. There's plenty of downtime in between games, so be well there.
What time does that kick off? About what? Subject 6.1, privilege on the floor. Subject 7.1, may I please get a motion to approve the Orange Ulster BOC's 2023-2024 administrative budget as presented? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Six, pass six to zero. Subject 7.2, may I please get a motion to cast one vote each for Martha Bogart and Lawrence Berger to the two open seats on the Orange Ulster BOC's cooperative board as presented? Mike, Ian, any discussion?
All in favor? Aye. Pass the six to zero.
Subject 8.1, may I please get a motion to adopt the 2023-2024 school district budget as presented? Patty, Dave, any discussion?
All in favor? Aye. Pass the six to zero.
Subject 9.1, may I please get a motion to approve the financial report for February and March 2023 as presented at this meeting? Aaron, Ian, any discussion?
All in favor? Aye. Pass the six to zero.
Subject 9.2, may I please get a motion to approve the property tax report card for submission to the New York State Education Department? Dave, Mike, any discussion?
All in favor? Aye. Pass the six to zero.
Subject 9.3, may I please get a motion to approve the intermunicipal lease agreement with the Village of Greenwood Lake as presented? Mike, Ian, any discussion?
All in favor? Aye. Pass the six to zero.
Subject 9.4, may I please get a motion to amend the 2022-2023 student calendar as presented? Dave, Patty, any discussion?
Yeah. I, I understand we're fortunate this year to have a due back date to prove. My day after spring break after a Sunday for extending the motto that it has to be back. Last day of school, two hours, it's not a good back. It's not a good back.
Oh, the other day, the actual last day, the new last day, would that be two hours?
It's two hours. Yeah, that's, that's, that's not a good back.
But I'm saying, the day that they do, the day that's meant for two hours.
It's not a full day.
Okay. They still have the last day of school, it's two hours.
I understand that. I just, in my, that's, the last day, that's a two hours of students. Students might go in there, take them by their children, and I understand that it's cutting the day short.
But I'm saying, if right now Friday is last day, they have to come for two hours, right? So now Thursday's the last day, put Thursday for two hours?
Yes, now I understand that. It means it's a shorter day.
So Thursday and Wednesday are now shortened days. Thursday and Friday, so they're still the same, not shortened days.
So you would be actually cutting it off short back.
Wednesday, right now, is a full day. And Thursday is a half day, and Friday is a two-hour day. With this adoption, Wednesday, Wednesday is now a half day, Thursday is now a half day. So you, so we shifted, so we still have a short, we still have two shortened days at the end. Same, the same, just one, two, three, four.
That's my opinion. I think the teachers would appreciate it. I understand this, unfortunately, especially of the extended holiday, holiday breaks. Again, sometimes it works out that way too. Sometimes it doesn't work out that way. Observers is, is okay for, you have to use it, that's good. But if we're giving you a call on give backs, let's give them back the dates.
Is there a reason we're not doing that?
So we are, again, we are still doing the two shortened days at the end, the same two shortened days. Also, if you don't have a straight, at spring break, it's more sure, spring break is always because we talk about that Monday, early Monday, that was of the... was the, some days in the nation was going to be. Um, and then, if you were to give another day on the quarterly weekend, that's one day less of construction, um, for the kids that, um, in, in June. So we kind of, rather than have a fourth quarter, so it's key with that as a construction day. Whereas the last day of school is usually just that one day, so we're just kind of taking it off at the end when there's not as much construction going on at the end of the year right now.
I agree with Mike. I think the fact that people, they just, uh, they just make that a two hour, so able to sort of, do you have any exciting thoughts?
Um, and what is this? Did it normally, uh, need to announce that parents know, if you were to put off till May, you'd be telling them that's like the fall of being announced, where they're planning school. They would never, right, you know, tonight, here you remember what that happened.
I'm close to two weeks, but I hope, uh, I'm gonna figure out the dates. I think, uh, we were, um, when they all passed her, right, um, spring break, everyone sort of enjoyed that. But how can we do that in the middle of the year?
That's, that's your, that's yours.
So we have, so we've done nine, and we have nine to town, is spring break and labor. We had extra, extra days. We only had six no days this year. Normally, we have eight. So normally, we rate, we give back a certain amount of year because we don't have to use as many. This year with only six days, it was harder to do that because we weren't sure how they're going to do. Sometimes you get a late spring storm or early spring storm, late winter storm that hits you when you have a long calendar. So if only, when we only had three no days left, I wasn't sure if we could do that. We would have had to do that in February. And that's still hitting, too. So, um, next year, yes, the Monday after is sort of in the calendar already because it's a longer school year. There's, uh, leap year, and we start early in September and go later to next year and autumn here. A lot depends on when Labor Day is and when Rating Day is, which is determined by the state, when five exams are, reasons are determined by the state.
So what are, do you think, what?
Sorry.
You already have two motions, right? No, no, we already had a motion to approve it. Two people approved it, all right? And then Mike brought the discussion. So, yeah, so now all, all in favor to amend the calendar? Mike, just myself? So this is not approved. And Ian? Whether to approve this and they get extra days off. So the problem we have is, is if we don't come to an agreement as a board in discussions, then there's no give back days.
Will you have any, if so, can, you might not have time?
If we don't approve this, then they, they don't get any give backs because we're not amending the calendars.
Well, are there any, it's not.
Right. So then the board, then we will discuss it while we have an executive session. And then if we don't come to an agreement in May on this, then there's no give backs.
The new days, most should count as a no.
No. So we have two yeses and, and no?
Um, I don't know. I, I want to sit down and look at the hour.
So we have two, two yeses right now, and we don't know if Michelle's gonna vote. So two yeses and two nos and, and you, so three nos. And one maybe? One, one no? You're not voting?
No, I just, I'm like, I wanna, I feel like I could be a five, sometimes I'm gonna do things that we can't really do right now and come back.
Can we, can we change it and have we talked to, we can add an X to this and go down to something else?
I guess the question is, we have an executive session after this.
So you could, you can move it to after the discussion, amend it after the discussion, back to the public, vote, potentially change it, or keep it as it is, vote, um, back or you can keep it as it is? We do, not, but, but with that, talk about it, come back out and vote. If that's okay, I think.
Can we have an open discussion right now? So does somebody need to make a motion to change the dates? So what we're gonna do here is if you guys want to have this discussion right now, it doesn't have to be an executive session. Um, we'll, we'll just change, uh, I guess first we have to have the discussions to see what we're actually gonna go. And, um, and then if we decide to make any changes, um, we're just gonna remove upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Or just, if we do change it, um, I guess for the two nos, what, what are your thoughts?
Well, I mean, ideally, it would suggest into Monday, after spring break, but that, that's, that's, I think we should move to the Tuesday to memorial that.
July, it's, it's more.
It'll be a Friday and Tuesday.
Five day weekend for Memorial Day?
And for finals, or for, for our finals, I think. Well, probably for the week of year twelve.
And then?
So.
And then if you do do this, then they, they have a full day Wednesday, and then they, then there's graduation for the eighth grade on Thursday, and then all the students and teachers are expected back on, on Friday. And students are gonna come back in on Friday?
They don't see their teachers, their school. They wanna, they wanna say goodbye to their friends. The teachers wanna say goodbye to their students. My opinion.
So I just kinda go on backwards, saying that this is not my recommendation with structure for students and to have that structure of that. Um, so that if it is changed to this, that, so I'll be upon the.
So any, any, Aaron, you were, what, what you're, you know, started. Dave? Ian, what do you, what do you?
I definitely agree with the argument for a full day, a full day, give back. It's really, I think, for the small camp. And how many, how many instructional days, like, nine days, uh, for text or?
For the finals, again?
The finals, yeah.
Right.
And, uh, things, when, and, and things that are already past instructional. So last quarter, it's supposed to be what they're talking about, if we get it to now?
Uh, June twenty-third.
That's the last full day.
No, no, not a full day. That would just be the term on there.
So last full day, that'd be last day.
Wednesday.
Thursday, if we get, and I think, rather than, it just, right, okay. And then if you give back, uh,
What?
last day of twenty, you take the twenty-third, then what, what hours do we have on twenty-third?
That would be, they would give a half day on Tuesday and then a half day on Wednesday. Oh, no, because they have off on the nineteenth, or the twelfth. So that's, then you have a full day Tuesday.
That's a full day Wednesday.
No, she said, give back.
Oh, you, yeah, Friday, and then there would be a half day on Wednesday and, um, a half day on Thursday. So you still have.
Not even a half day.
Just, I said, go, go to the, yeah, the last day. So it's twenty-third and twenty-second.
Twenty-first and twenty-second.
So if I have to, I'll, well, then.
And that, you wanna talk about that, stretch to, or do something about?
Yes.
And then that, how it could come down, Friday, Tuesday, and Friday. Because if we give back, like what Mike suggested, Tuesday after Memorial Day, then there would be a full day Wednesday, and then a half day Thursday, and two hours of time.
So it is two hours, about a half day, two hours and about a half day.
No, that, that's if you give back.
Right, right.
Then they, and then they lose a half day on Wednesday, and that becomes a full day. So they're losing a half day exceptionally.
All right.
It's just, it's like the hours, it's just. Okay, so we're gonna vote on, uh, subject nine point four. Okay, and this is not what we just discussed. This is the way it is written in the motion. Motion to amend the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three student calendar as presented. Motion. Second motion. Aaron, all right, all in favor? Okay. So, yeah. So I'm in big, I'm, this is for what we currently have, no? Okay. So, aye? Aye. Yeah. Aye.
Yes.
Okay, so it's three yes. Three nos. S, any nays? There. Three S. So this motion fails. Michelle's not here. Sorry. For either of the nays or the guesses. So. Okay. Yes, all right. So just so everybody knows, if you didn't hear this, this, this is subject nine point four, landing the calendar failed. Um, we didn't get enough votes either for guesses or, or nays for changing it, so Sarah's gonna adjust it, and we're gonna continue on with the other agenda items, and then we'll, we'll come back to this, uh, once she has that read. Okay, subject nine point five, a motion to appoint the firm of Clark Patterson Lee as district architect as presented. Motion. Ian? No, not Ian. Aaron? Ian? Um, all in favor? Aye. Six guesses? Good. Moving along then. Subject nine point six, a motion to award the firm of Clark Patterson Lee the district-wide improvement capital project as presented. Dave, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, another one, six to zero. Subject nine point seven, a motion to award the firm of Clark Patterson Lee the twenty twenty-three five-year building condition survey as presented. Aaron, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Subject nine point eight, a motion to approve the final payment to Veritas Construction Services as presented. Dave, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Subject nine point nine, a motion to approve the final payment for seven engineers, PC as presented. Mike, Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Subject nine point ten, a motion to approve the security services approbation transfer as presented. Mike? Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Subject nine dot eleven, a motion to approve the capital project bid award for the middle school domestic water pump replacement number twenty-five as presented. Mike, Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Subject nine dot twelve, a motion to award middle school capital project roof replacement bid award number twenty, number twenty-three as presented. Dave? Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Subject nine dot thirteen, a motion to approve the approbation of ones for the purchase of a security camera upgrade as presented. Mike, Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot fourteen, a motion to approve the elevator upgrade of an elementary school as presented. Mike? Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot fifteen, a motion for approval of the Washington DC trip and approval for transfer of funds as presented. Mike, Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot sixteen, a motion to approve the cost for Hallmark Music in the Park and Transfer Funds as presented. Dave, Patty, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Subject nine dot seventeen, uh, motion to gratefully accept the generous donation to a school lunch fund as presented. A hundred dollar donation by Mrs. Ziora. Dave, Patty, all in favor? Motion passes six to zero, and thank you again for the generous donation. Passes six to zero. Uh, subject nine dot eighteen, a motion to approve the Medicaid services consultant agreement as presented. Mike, Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Okay, uh, subject nine, nine dot nineteen, a motion to approve the health service agreement with Greenberg Central School District as presented. Aaron, Ian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. And? So now, um, we're going back to. Okay, we're gonna add a push item, uh, to the agenda. Can we add an, a push item, uh, seventy-nine dot twenty? Add it, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
So the, the motion, adding agenda item nine dot twenty was added. So, uh, this is a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three student calendar to include Friday, May twenty-sixth law, and Tuesday, May thirtieth. As no day give back days. The district will be full substitute. Motion. Mike, Aaron, all in favor? All in favor? Four. Or nine dot twenty? Uh, any names? It's a, a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three student calendar to include Friday, May twenty-sixth, and Tuesday, May thirtieth. There we have Monday on Memorial Day. As a no give back date. The district will be voted for. Yes, okay. Uh, still, five to one, so, um, they're both. Five to one, so that passes now, five to one. Okay. Personnel, uh, subject ten dot one, a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Samantha Hyatt as elementary teacher as presented. Aaron? Mike? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject ten dot two, a motion to approve the change in title of Tracy Mezzick as presented. Mike? Aaron? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject ten dot three, a motion to appoint Kim Cross as cook at the El- elementary school as presented. Mike? Dave? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject ten dot four, a motion to approve the unpaid leave of absence of Pamela Jennings as presented. Mike? Aaron? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Uh, motion ten dot five, a motion to approve the unpaid leave of absence of Alexis Munias as presented. Aaron? Mike? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Motion ten dot six, a motion to, or sorry, sorry, subject ten dot six, a motion to approve the unpaid leave of absence of Marianne Kennedy as presented. Aaron? Mike? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject ten dot seven, a motion to appoint Walton Landrew as substitute school bus driver as presented. Dave? Patty? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject ten dot eight, a motion to appoint Ellen Mahoney as substitute school nurse as presented. Dave? Ian? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject eleven dot one, a motion to accept the Committee on Special Education, Pre-School Special Education Recommendation as presented at this meeting. Mike? Patty? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, subject twelve dot one, a motion to adjourn the executive session regarding negotiations pursuant to the Taylor Law involving the administrators union. Aaron? Mike? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Uh, no action will be taken after the executive session. Okay. The next Board of Education meeting will take place on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six P.M. in the middle school gymnasium. We ended at seven twenty.